Yeah.
All right, it's our first order of business will be the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody to our May twenty first. Compliments, a little smirking up here, but you all made it okay. And for item consent agenda, which includes April twelfth, twenty twenty four, special council meeting minutes, April sixteenth, twenty twenty four, regular council meeting minutes, April twenty fourth, special council meeting minutes, resolution twenty four sixteen, accepting donations. Request to approve seasonal summer employees, request to approve graduation parade route, request to approve chief's best fireworks application. And finally, your request to approve chief's best garden tractor pool road. Later in.
Uh, yes. Mister Mayor, if I could, um, ask to item E, the request to approve seasonal summer employees, if we could add Matthew Shetty to that list. Um, we have received an application to help with part time public works this summer.
I'll move the consent agenda.
A second. Motion in a second.
Can we just verify then?
Agenda including Matthew.
Including, thank you.
Including, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
With Matthew Shetty, we have a very nice.
We do.
Play this year. So that was nice to see. Right. Randy.
Hi.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
David will be. The public, do we have any written correspondence?
No, Mister Mayor.
All right, we got a couple of proclamations to read tonight. First proclamation, whereas the city of Pine Island is designated an age friendly community with efforts to promote a welcoming and inclusive community for all ages. And whereas the age friendly committee has continued to work tirelessly with the Pine Island area home services, Pine Island Senior Center, dementia friends and many other age friendly groups to promote the wellbeing of our older adults. And whereas the city of Pine Island supports the efforts of the age friendly committee to ensure our seniors and older adults have the opportunity to keep Pine Island a forever home and city. And whereas I, Mayor David Fries, call upon our community members to acknowledge the important role that our older adults play in the enrichment of our community. And whereas the age friendly volunteers are recognized for their many hours of work, educational programs, classes and opportunities provided to our community members to enhance their knowledge and understanding of the meaning of an age friendly community. And whereas we publicly thank those older adults who continue to contribute and participate in our community. And whereas I, Mayor David Fries, will publicly thank the Pine Island Public Schools and Van Horn Public Library for their continuing efforts in promoting age friendly opportunities. Now therefore, I, Mayor David Fries, do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty four as older adults among in Pine Island in collaboration with the administration of community living. It is a time to recognize older Americans' contributions, highlighting aging trends and reaffirm commitments to serving the older adults in the Pine Island community. Respectfully, David Fries, May twenty first, twenty twenty four. And with that, I will recognize Pine Island was featured as one of the age friendly communities in Minnesota um, in this AARP magazine. And this is in no part to the work of our age friendly committee and their countless hours of work. And we truly appreciate what they're doing and how Pine Island is now being recognized as a community that's going in the right direction. Thanks to Marie Havava and her group there and Hannah Swanson. I will read the second proclamation, whereas the city of Pine Island supports the efforts of our local American Legion family in their efforts to promote a supportive community to our military veterans and their families. And whereas the Friday before Memorial Day, which this Friday is declared Poppy Day. And whereas the public is encouraged to wear a red poppy to honor the fallen and support the living who has worn our nation's uniforms. And whereas the red poppy is a nationally recognized symbol of sacrifice worn by Americans since World War One to honor those who served and died for our country in all wars. To remind Americans of the sacrifice made by our veterans while protecting our precious freedoms. And whereas we remember with respect that the poppy flourished in Europe because of the rubble left by the war. And whereas the Pine Island American Legion Auxiliary leads our local community each year to distribute poppies for the public to wear. And whereas on behalf of the city and the office of the mayor, we publicly thank our veterans, both past and present, for their sacrifice in fighting our nation's wars. Now therefore, I, Mayor David Fries, do hereby proclaim May to be recognized as Poppy Month in the city of Pine Island in support of our American Legion family. It is a time to reflect, thank and support those in our nation's military and reaffirm our commitment to show support to those protecting the United States of America. Respectfully, David Fries, Mayor of Pine Island, May twenty first, twenty twenty four, including a copy of the poem in Landersfield. And I will challenge our community members to come out on Memorial Day and show their support to uh, those family members of our nation's fallen at our Memorial Day services, which is led by the American Legion family. And thank you to the Legion Auxiliary and Ms. Linda Kelly for bringing the poppies for council members to wear and on the city staff. So thank you for doing that. That concludes the proclamation portion, which we will thank. Pastor, are you here? Pastor tonight, Mr. Eric Johnson. Welcome, sir.
Eric Johnson, live on the Southwest, part of Pine Island, Campbell, Florida.
And I was here in December of last year and made it, brought up the issue of the unfinished drainage issue. Uh, and just I hadn't heard anything after that meeting uh, last December. So I called a couple of weeks later and talked to um, forget who I had to talk to in the city that day. And they said, oh, there's one more, we'll get, we'll give the, the contractor one more chance to get it taken care of. And then if not, then we'll contract it out and build a contractor. Nothing happened and obviously it was December at that time. So I wasn't expecting anything in the wintertime. Spring's been going on and so I thought, well, I'll, I'll see what's going on. And last week I called the city to ask about just an update. Left a message last Monday, hadn't heard anything back at all. And so I called again today to put my name on the public uh, comment uh, list. And then um, got in touch, was reached out to by, by Craig uh, to talk about scheduling a meetup with um, contractor and us to, to just to figure that out next week. So uh, glad we're moving forward. Uh, I'm excited, hopefully in a month or two to say thank you uh, for getting this stuff done. Um, but uh, just today was the um, unfortunately, the fire that needs to be lit. I know that uh, our concern is not the top of any list of any things that you can get done by the city. So I wanted to be a little bit, a little bit persistent and I, so um, no, no, no extreme frustration or anger, anything of that, just glad that, that things are starting to move hopefully. And uh, so that's glad there's a, uh, we're right now, a meeting on the books now to try to hopefully get that taken care of. But like I said, wouldn't, I don't think it would have happened, at least not this soon, had I not called today to make a appointment to come here, so.
Thank you for coming in.
And I, and just as an update now, there's, I, I texted my wife, there's no flooding in our yard, which is great, which had been, which if the culvert hadn't been put in last year, it would have been flooded. So there's, so things are going in the right direction and just looking forward to it all be finished, so. That was all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, she saw I was shorter. I'm Linda Kelly, I am not a citizen of Pine Island. I'm kind of wearing two hats tonight. Thank you for your proclamation to the American Legion Auxiliary. Um, the poppy is a important symbol to us, so we appreciate that. I am here as a Roscoe Township resident that lives west of five hundred eleventh street bridge. I'm on five hundred eleventh. Um, the bridge was closed. I was hoping maybe there was going to be an update at tonight's meeting, but I visited with Elizabeth earlier today and she kind of gave me um, an update on the status of whatever. I was kind of hoping that the bridge would be in before school started. Um, the school bus goes down twice every day, down and back up the hill. And this kind of the year, you know, and of course, summer's here as of Friday, I think. So, you know, yes, it takes me ten minutes to get to town instead of five minutes, but um, you know, it's not wintertime. Last winter would have been okay too, but who knows what we're going to get. If the hill gets slippery, on my side of the road, about a third of the way down the hill, there is a very deep gully. And if the school bus would happen to slide and get over, it wouldn't be pretty. And I just, I don't know how many kids are on the bus. I know that they don't pick up anybody down below because that little girl is only two or three, I don't know. Um, and I know the people on top of the hill, I don't think their boy rides because he goes to the early learning center. And, but there is one about probably a mile and a quarter from my house. And there is a little boy there, I guess, that rides the bus. And you just worry about these kids, you know, way back when this first happened and you narrowed the bridge, I sent a letter to this council, maybe it wasn't any of you, but to the council. And I had measured how much further it was for um, the first responders, the fire truck and ambulance. Um, and it was, it's a distance, especially in the wintertime, when you come down my hill, they don't, can't stop beginning to my driveway. I lived there all my life and when I was uh, in school, I had to walk to the bottom of the hill and get on the bus with the neighbors because they couldn't stop at my driveway, you know? So it is definitely, and of course, the, I'm sure the buses have better equipment as far as stopping and whatever, but um, it's still, you know, it is a, definitely is a concern. Um, now that the bridge is closed completely, even the sheriff's car or the fireman's pickup could not get across, at least to do something if there was an emergency, you know? So I just asked that the council keep on top of it and I know it's a lot of red tape. And I understand right now it's in the hands of the state. And when you're dealing with first one set of people and then you move up to another set and then another set, it's, it's red tape and I understand that. But just if you, I guess I'm just asking to ask the questions. You guys are in a better position than we are to ask the questions, but just keep a handle on it, I guess, is all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, council, we're going to move into the administration. And our first item is going to be resolution, resolution twenty four dash seventeen, appointing Brandon Paul to City Council vacancy, along with a swearing in for Mister Paul.
I'm, I'll move resolution twenty four seventeen.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Thank you for your willingness to serve Mister Paul. Would vote to Randy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
David is hi. And are you going to swear again?
Just make this one on.
Do you want to raise your right hand, please? Hi.
Hi.
State your name.
Vernon Paul.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Justly.
Justly.
And impartially discharge.
Impartially discharge.
The duties of council member of the city of Pine Island.
The duties of council member of the city of Pine Island.
Minnesota.
Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Alright.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Move to item B, which is request a food purchase agreement with Prairie Island Indian community. And we have a representative. Mine, otherwise, Elizabeth, will you take the lead on this one?
Sure, um, I had a pretty detailed memo in the packet, so I won't go um, into too much detail. But council, as you know, we've been um, talking about this over the course of the last eighteen months um, in relation to the MinDOT agreement, which we did amend about a year ago. Um, and then up until now, um, to come to this purchase agreement with the Prairie Island Indian community. Uh, the agreement states that um, there's eighty three point five three acres of uh, excess right of way essentially from the Elk Run interchange project. Um, the city of that eighty three point five three acres, the city is going to retain eleven point three six acres. Otherwise, uh, the rest of that excess right of way uh, is listed in the agreement. Uh, there's exhibits for every single parcel uh, that will be included in the agreement. And so for those acreage, um, the purchase agreement is for one million five hundred ninety six thousand dollars, five hundred ninety six thousand seven hundred dollars. Uh, so that's the agreement before you. For the eleven point three six acres that the city is going to retain, there are three uh, options listed for future um, development that either the state, the city will retain that for future uh, public infrastructure, or we can sell it to the tribe, or there is specific development um, language in the agreement as well.
And just so people are aware too, that this has been a very, very, very long process with a lot of time, this seems to start, which I'd like to thank uh, my city staff for the diligent work on this. And being able to bring their, the answers to council's questions, so that's very much appreciated. Bob, did you have any, um, anything you wanted to add pertaining to the agreement?
I do, Mayor, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Great, uh, well, Elizabeth uh, gave me the uh, okay to miss the weather. Um, and so I appreciate that, I'm sorry, uh, council member Paul, I'm not there to shake your hands, uh, hand, but congratulations. Um, yes, so I guess, Mayor, I just wanted to say, we, you know, we've talked, the council's talked with me uh, and staff in closed session a few times. Cities are allowed to talk about buying or selling real estate in closed session. Uh, and we've done that a few times on this deal. And Mayor, as you pointed out, um, beyond this particular transaction with the tribe, um, this, the history of this real estate, uh, of course, is well known to the city and to your community, goes back a decade or more. Um, and so we've, we've sort of had a relationship to this land for, for quite some time now. I guess the only thing I want to say, uh, since we're not in closed session now, since we're talking about this publicly, Elizabeth's memo, uh, to the extent anybody would want to know sort of the, the guts of the deal, the memo does a very good job of just summarizing the guts of the deal. What I wanted to say was just that, um, although um, this transaction involves a lot of properties, a lot of, of little uh, remnant parcels uh, uh, around the interchange um, that were acquired by the city for the interchange project. Uh, although there's a lot of parcels involved and although frankly, appraising uh, the value of the parcels was a little bit complicated, right? Because there were so many different parcels and they were all differently, differently situated, all having different access on, on, on alternating sides of the, of the highway. So all of them in very different positions. So figuring out the, the fair value for all of the parcels was a little complicated. Um, but the agreement itself, the agreement, the purchase agreement that's in front of you, really is a pretty milquetoast, pretty boilerplate purchase agreement. Um, it was drafted in the first instance by the very good uh, lawyers uh, on behalf of the tribe. I've reviewed it, of course, a few times, but really the guts of the agreement uh, aren't very um, exciting. They aren't very unusual, they're really boilerplate purchase agreement language. Really, it's only this section four point two point eight uh, that Elizabeth just spelled out that um, does recognize that although we're sort of selling almost all of the excess right of way land to the tribe, we are retaining a, a parcel, it's a little bit over ten acres. Um, and what we've had to work through with the tribe is that we're retaining that parcel both for potential public use, both for possible, as I understand it, possibly a water tower or other public infrastructure purposes, but also because the city has a high interest in how that land, the part that the city may not use. City has a very high interest in how that land gets developed, it's sort of the gateway to your community. Um, it's right there near the interchange, so for a couple of reasons, it's a bit of a unique parcel. And so this section four point two point eight really is a language that's meant to address that. That the parcel is important to the tribe too. And so sort of working through our desire to, to hang on to the parcel and control it and the tribe's desire to own it, ultimately, that's what we've sort of had to balance here and that's what this language does. It does allow the city to develop it either for the city's purposes or sell it for private development, but it does give the tribe some rights to notice before we would do that. And it would require us to have a development plan from a buyer, from a proposed developer in hand, um, so that uh, there is some uh, likelihood of development occurring before the city goes about selling it. So that's sort of the balance that we've struck. That's a topic that we've talked about in closed session a couple of times. And I think, I think I've threaded, I think we, council for the tribe and I have threaded the needle on the respective interests of the two parties. So I, I recommend the agreement and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. This is going to be an action item, council.
I'll move approval for the request um, for the purchase agreement with Prairie Island Indian community.
Well, second.
Motion in a second on the agreement that has been fused between the city of Pine Island and the tribe.
I'd just like to say thanks for all the hard work you guys put into doing this.
Or some, lock into some appreciation as well. This will be fun, is to have conversations. Any other discussion? Vice Bernard.
I would like to abstain since I'm not familiar with all of that, you missed the past year or so.
Randy.
Hi.
Mike. Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
And David is, I record your butt, Brandon interesting. All right, council, we will move on to item, or excuse me, resolution twenty four eighteen, accepting donations from the Lions Club. And they've been communicating with the city about some projects that they're going to be working on.
Yes, correct, uh, the Lions Club first approached the park board and uh, essentially they want to become more, to be involved. And by doing that, they want to put more activities on at the um, Trailhead Pavilion. And so a discussion started about uh, what the city could do to liven up the pavilion, um, which the park board was on board for that. Uh, the Lions Club um, offered to donate five thousand dollars to the city each year for three years. Uh, and in exchange, they would like to essentially sponsor the pavilion. And so they would like a sign placed on the east and west ends of the pavilion and then a smaller sign on the north side, uh, kind of by the, the glass cases there. Uh, and so that the park board recommended that um, to the council. Uh, as you know, the city needs to approve and accept all donations. Uh, so that is the resolute, resolution before you today. There is a comment in the resolution that both the Lions Club and the city would agree on the placement and like signs of the sign. So the current trailhead park signs would, we're looking at updating that through the park board, but the current trailhead park signs would stay as big as they are. So essentially the Lions Club signage would work around the large trailhead park signs up cap.
And then the Lions Club is, would you get of any cost to the signage, the Lions signage?
Yes, the Lions Club would pay for their own Lions Club signage, so the city would not have any costs in the signs themselves.
Excellent. Make the motion.
Um. Um, move approval for accepting donation from the Lions Club for twenty four eighteen.
Well, second.
A motion in a second. And just for, so the public understands too, uh, the Lions Club. the Lions Club is extremely active as a community. And they've got a membership of about sixty plus, which makes them one of the bigger Lions Clubs in the area. And we truly appreciate the, the work that they do. And this is one of the projects that they've been, they've been looking to add on some projects, and this is one of them. And you might see around the community, they have around five hundred flags that they posted as part of the Fire Play program with, when they, when they do this project every year, some of that money has been used towards different nonprofits and projects in the community. And Mr. Dean Leese is the leader behind the Fire Play program. And this is a good example where they take funds that they raised through that project and turn around and put it back in the community. And I'm very thankful for an organization like that as well. So I want to publicly thank them.
The park board, that donation money will be spent at the pavilion at the park board's discretion. Is that what we're going to do?
Yes, essentially. So the park board did already vote to update the pavilion, whether or not they receive these funds. And so they have approved, we updated the urinal, I believe, in the men's restroom, that both the inside and outside of the pavilion will be painted as well. The inside will all be sealed first and then epoxied, and then the outside will be repainted from the current lovely salmon color to an updated tan color. So.
But it'll be here.
I was liking updated urinal.
Oh, this would be nice. It's put a lot of money into that park, so this would be a nice addition.
Yeah, it will be nice.
All right, we have a motion in a second on the resolution. Bernard.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jason.
Hi.
And David is aye. Thank you. We have a request, item D, to approve waiving rental fees for the Douglas Trail Park Pavilion on August nineteenth and September twentieth for the Pine Island Lions Club. I believe this is going to be for both their annual picnic and for a governor's.
Yep. That's correct. So the Lions Club would like to host these two events typically in the past. When a nonprofit comes to council to waive the fees, council has done that in the past.
I'll move to approve the waiving of the rental fees.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? Vice Bernard.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jason.
Hi.
And David is aye. Resolution twenty-four nineteen, approving fund transfer in closing accounts. This is for the New Haven.
Yes, so back in twenty twenty-one, city council approved a two point six five million dollar general obligation improvement and refunding note. So essentially, a geo bond, it's a little bit different because it's a note. But with that, so we refunded two different bonds. And then on top of that, we included the New Haven paving road project within that refunding note. That project is done. When we do a project like that, we open a special fund account. And so we opened the fund four zero six to track their expenses for the New Haven Road project. That project is now complete, and there is twenty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars left in that account. I'm asking council to move that twenty-four thousand dollars into the account three fifteen, which is where the bond payments would come through. So essentially, we have a surplus of the money, so that would go to repay back the bond.
Repay.
And then once that four oh six bond is at zero, I'm asking council to close it.
I'll move resolution twenty-four nineteen.
I'll second.
A motion in a second on resolution twenty-four nineteen. And off present in council, where the city staff took that ticket out. Any other discussion? People getting pulled up. Bernard.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jason.
Hi.
And David is aye. Moving on to the Pine Haven campus, we've got a request for the updated management agreement for other places. See.
So this was brought before you in December of twenty twenty-three, where the state was hired Pathways Incorporated to manage Pine Haven, went through expenses. Essentially, the cash flow was not working, and so they had asked to increase the management fee to ten thousand dollars per month. Council agreed to that, and we did increase Evergreen Place rent. Those rent increases went into effect March first. This now is a follow-up to that to agree upon raising that management fee to ten thousand dollars per month. As you can see, the old management agreement, this from nineteen ninety-five, is very old and outdated. This would help bring that up to date. The original agreement was with Pine Haven Inc., so that's what you see this agreement would be with Pine Haven Inc. as well. Since that board does still meet and oversee, although the state is overseeing the operations, the Pine Haven Board is still responsible for that.
So when they, when they create an agreement like this, do you think the city representatives have any, are you able to have any oversight in making sure that agreement is not? So like, are they, are they capable to make sure that it's being fulfilled?
Yeah, so we, we have the agreement, so the city would want to be known if it's not being in compliance. But yes, we need multiple times a month to discuss the operations of Evergreen Place with, with Pathways and the state.
Mayor.
Yes, Bob.
If I, if I may, just again, from, from legal perspective, just sort of three, three points that I think are worth underscoring about this agreement. The first is, of course, just changing the management fee. Obviously, that's the, that's the bottom line here, is that we're increasing the management fee to the ten thousand dollars per month. That is something I understand council has previously said okay to, subject to getting a written agreement. So that's one of the things it does. The other two things it does, though, that I, I think are important to point out to the council is, I guess there was some misunderstanding or, or lack of meeting of the minds about whether the nineteen ninety-five management agreement remained in place or not. That's not something that Pine Haven Inc. has ever brought up, but the state agencies that we were dealing with sort of raised a question about that. This agreement confirms that that is the case, that agreement does remain in place. That's important to the city. That agreement protects the city, in my judgment. And then the other thing that this agreement does is it confirms that we have been making the payments required by that management agreement, that before now, before when you approve the increase in the management fee, we've been paying exactly what we were obligated to pay. So it does those two things that I think from the state's perspective are important. And again, I, I recommend, I think Elizabeth already said it, but I think staff and I recommend that we proceed with this, this agreement.
We don't have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the updated management agreement for Evergreen Place.
I'll second.
You have a motion in a second. Vernon.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, number G, request to hire a part-time library staff member. Rachel.
Hi, friends. Never got muted. Okay, I had a staff member give me their resignation this month. And so we need to replace her position. And I've also been having a lot of time on the desk already, helping out with circulation and the things that my library assistants take care of for me. So I am looking to get off of my desk shifts, which are about twelve to sixteen hours on average a week, so I can do more administrative and other kind of work in the library. So basically, the memo I sent you for this packet kind of talks a little bit about that. I've been taking a lot more engagement with different community organizations, like that age-friendly committee that David talked about earlier. And so I am looking basically to not only fill Emily's position as she moves on to other places, but also to cover the time that I spend on the desk. I had two really good interviews last week and this week. So I'm hoping that those two individuals will be able to fill these two positions that are kind of open with that. Do you have any kind of questions for me about that?
Everything's covered in the budget, too.
So one of the positions that's covered in the budget, that would just be replacing an individual who resigned. Replacing Rachel on the library schedule to work the desk would be additional dollars. I crunched some numbers, and I, I just estimated eighteen hours a week, which is overestimating, but it would come to about eight thousand dollars at the max of over-budgeted expenses.
For the year.
For this year. And then we could budget it in that position for the twenty twenty-five.
And I will say that one of these, we'll be revisiting staffing in the fall probably, because one of these people who have applied is a college student that just emailed me out of the blue and said, hey, are you looking for someone for the summer? And it was perfect timing. So we'll be, you know, we can look at that again in the fall if things need to be updated or changed at that point.
Yeah, I'm gonna go for the request to hire a part-time library staff members.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Bernard.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Number H, resolution twenty-four twenty, approving fund transfer in closing accounts.
So as I stated earlier, teaching about how we open funds for special accounts. Last year, we had a street project, and the city, city council approved a three point six five million dollar general obligation utility revenue bond for the Fourth Street Southwest, we could struck projects. After that was approved, we opened fund four fifty-one to track the expenses of the street project. That fund is negative three hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars. That's expected, because that's the city's portion, cash portion. So when we take out a bond, we don't bond a hundred percent of the amount. We do pay cash for a certain amount, just to bring the bond dollars down. So I'm asking that we transfer from the general fund one-on-one account, the three hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred and five hundred and fifty-four dollars, which is all expected and planned, to bring that account to zero, so then we can close that four fifty-one account. The reason we are closing that account, typically, we don't close it until a year or two after, just because we have additional expenses. However, because this was a utility revenue bond that is being tracked all through our sewer and water accounts, three six oh one and six oh two, and so it doesn't, it no longer needs to be tracked through the four fifty-one.
I'll move approval for twenty-four twenty, approving the fund transfer and closing of the account.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Vernon.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Planning Commission.
No, we didn't have anything this month.
Public Works and Engineering. We have a request to approve quote for a street resurface.
There you go.
Thank you, gotta figure it out. Yeah, the, the the, the quote for the street resurfaces, the trailer park, we were going to do last year. We've got quotes this year. So it's a total reclaim and four new inches of blacktop. So I was just looking for the approval to go ahead. We had low bidders, SNL contracting out of Rochester is a little bitter, like right around a hundred and thirty-three thousand, thirty-four thousand. You comfortable with them?
Yeah.
Yeah, been doing this a long time.
Yeah.
And just to reiterate, this was a budgeted project.
I'm move approval for the quote for the street resurface.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Vernon.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Or be request to approve, replace and purchase a batwing brush hog.
So what that is, is we have an existing brush hog that has been in the shop multiple times. And we want to get, get it off our hands and, and replace it with a fifteen inch, or fifteen, fifteen foot batwing. It's just going to save us time, fuel. When we start mowing those ditches out there, it takes forever. So this be a, it can cut up to three inch trees, so.
That'd be nice.
Yeah. And that's what we gotta have, so.
This is unexpected? I mean, this is, we didn't plan on this. Is it not budgeted?
It's, no, no, it's just, it's needs to be replaced. It's
Yeah.
It's been in the shop three times, and when it's out, then it's out for a whole month, and we can't. We gotta get some that's reliable.
So as far as the budget is, not budgeted, however, it is coming out of the two forty-five street sewer account. And that account is essentially savings account. We, we save money for our storm sewer maintenance in that account.
Yeah, this will come out. Just because it's mowing the ditches.
Yeah, one of the reasons, I'll move approval of the batwing brush hog at the Loder Myers quote of sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Vernon.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Last one, request to approve and replace purchase flail mower.
Yeah, we've, we've had this piece of equipment for quite a while, and it's, it's shot.
Twenty fourteen.
Yeah, and it does a lot of mowing. And we got a pretty decent price on it from Loder Myers. They were the low bidder on it. Eighty-five hundred was traded. So. It does a lot of mowing.
Yeah. I'll
And it is a shot.
Yeah.
I'll approve their replace and purchase for the flail mower. Move approval.
You have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I will just add that, again, this is coming out of the capital equipment fund two fifty. Again, this is our capital equipment savings account essentially, and so all of our equipment we save for this, so it will not be affecting the general fund.
Vernon.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Legal.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Acting Mayor Council, yeah, I, I've said my piece. I don't have anything to report. I'm happy to answer questions.
Claims.
I'll move claims.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Vernon.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Department reports, administrator.
I'll leave everything in my report. I will comment. I'm going to jump down to the North Subborough Sanitary District. You may have heard that legislative session has come to an end, and there has not been a passing of a bonding. So we did not receive our funding for the sanitary sewer district. We're kind of waiting to see if the governor calls a special session or not. So it's kind of a waiting game. If not, we're going to go to the drawing board on our project and our timeline and get creative, so. That's all I have.
Library.
I'm just wanted to let everyone know that summer reading program, if anyone has kids or even adults, we have adults who participate as well. Sign up starts June third. Heidi is at the elementary school all week this week, so she is having fun with all of the kiddos with their library media center classes, talking about the public library. Speaking of the school libraries, they are leaving the same catalog that we have been using with them, that we use for checking in and checking out materials at the high school, middle school library. So that we have been talking to middle school and high school media specialists and the principal of the middle school about having about having uh, some of those kids have the opportunity to have pu, public library cards. And we've arranged to have delivery for, from the school to us and vice versa, so that they'll still have materials available to them um, for school projects and the like. So that's really exciting for us, and we look to have a lot of new borrowers because of that. So we'll be looking forward to working with the school for that. Otherwise, um, as I mentioned, summer reading, we've got lots of stuff going on. It's all about recycling this year. So if you want to come and spend a couple of minutes and color a couple of water bottles for me, that would be fantastic. We've had a ton donated this year. And Heidi has these great projects to go with those, so come on over to the library, check out a book and color a bottle. Um, I do have two programs that I did not get on my report, um, coming up next month. We've got a Minnesota author tour coming through the region through the legacy um, grants that Soko provides to us. K O, K O, uh, Kalia Yang, she's a Mung author memoir, um, author out of the Twin Cities. She will be in the town on the twelfth of June. And then the following day, Michael Hall, who writes children's books, will be here on the thirteenth. His presentation is gonna be kind of an interesting one. It's not gonna just be, I'm an author and here's why. But he's also gonna be encouraging kids, you know, and adults, anyone who's interested in how do you become published? How do you go from being a graphic artist like he was to a published children's author and illustrator? So we hope that people will come and um, learn more about that from him, so that's what I have for you today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thanks, Rachel.
Public Works, nothing, park board. E D A.
Yes, I do have most of that in my packet. I do just want to update one thing. The K T T C advertising uh, shoot was supposed to take place yesterday. Um, but with some of the painting that hasn't been done at the pickleball courts and at the uh, Trailhead Pavilion, we postponed that till June so that uh, everything will look as nice as possible for when we do that shoot. Um, so, but that's all I have for you today.
Thank you. Fire department, they're busy. Sheriff's Office, you got anything for us? Thank you.
Thanks for your work.
Yeah, thank you.
Cemetery Board, License Bureau, anything from them?
You know, I do want to say something about emergency management. Sorry.
Yeah.
We didn't get there yet, but I jumped ahead, I'm sorry. Uh, so as you know, Brandon Matheson and Sam Lance stepped into that role a little over a year ago. Uh, I just want to applaud them even though they aren't here. Uh, so we have a constant teams, the city uses teams to communicate internally. Um, I have a constant teams conversation with both of them um, about miscellaneous things, duties that they're working on. In addition to that, we meet in person about every other month or quarterly. Um, I just had my quarterly meeting with them uh, last week. And the last time we met, they had about ten action items to just look into various quotes and more so planned projects. And when I met with them this week, they actually had completed all of ten uh, tasks that they had. So uh, the, the work that they're doing is amazing, especially for the limited pay that they're getting. Uh, most of this time is, is done on their own time, and I just want to make sure that they're recognized for that.
Thanks. Thank you.
County Board. Sheriff Seth, you have anything for us?
Nothing really, just uh, stuff coming in. We do uh, please sit down.
You're not gonna help me put out signs, then?
Take a motion to adjourn then?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Vernon.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Thanks, Bob.
Uh, Mike.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Thanks, Mayor.